Yeah. Counselors, would you give the opportunity for me to interview? Interview, yes. Announce the person for opening prayer, moment of silence, and pledge allegiance is our own Dan Vasallo. Dan Vasallo ran the marathon, almost half of it, by the time he was waiting here. He's been waiting for just about an hour. He's here with his wife Katrina. Dan ran the Boston Marathon this past week in the horrible conditions that was occurring. Out of 4,000 men, he placed 10th out of 125,000 participants. His time was 2 minutes and 25 seconds, 25 minutes and 2 seconds. We're all so proud of him, probably not any more proud of his father-in-law, of Dan. And again, I am more proud as award four resident. Can we please welcome Dan to the podium, please?
Hey, Dan, if we can correct the record for you. He ran 10th out of 29,978 runners, and he completed the marathon in 2 hours and 27 minutes, which, if you calculate that out, that's quite a rate.
Thank you.
Like I said, there was probably no one more prouder than his father-in-law here.
Do I need to come up with a prayer, or do I just do the pledge of allegiance?
Moment of silence.
Moment of silence, okay. Thank you. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mr. President, if I may.
Absolutely.
Mr. Vasallo and his wife Katrina have been deeply involved in charitable giving. You know, we boast about his feats as an athlete, but we couldn't do what we do in the city without the commitment of Katrina and Dan, so I'd like to have that recognized if I could. Thank you for what you do.
Please note this.
Thank you, Counselor Gould. Also, thank you to the entire City Council. It's nice to be recognized, that's for sure. Thank you.
And one last tidbit of information, that if all facts bear out as they're supposed to, as a 10th place finisher in a major marathon, Dan will have qualified for the Olympic Trials in Atlanta in 2020.
Thank you, Counselor Gravel. That is correct, and I suppose that means that for the City Council meeting on February 28, 2020, you might need to not be there that day. Thank you very much for your time, everybody.
Mr. President, move approve of the record, please.
Heard the motion. All in favor, any opposed, it's a vote. Just like to make the opening statement, our meeting law statement, this meeting is being televised live by cable channel 9 and being taped by PBD Access TV. It's also being recorded by our own City Council stenographer. Move to 4A, would the clerk please read the notice?
Notice is hereby given that the City Council of the City of PBD, acting as a special permit granting authority, will conduct a public hearing on Thursday evening, April 26, 2018, at 7:30 PM in the Frank Wiggan Auditorium, City Hall, 24 Lowell Street, PBD, Mass., on the application from Simon Property Group, 225 West Washington Street, Indianapolis, Indiana, for a special permit, seeking to amend special permit 20-2011 by modifying the design of the existing digital billboard sign by changing metal panels on the existing frame and installing a new channel letter set at said 210 Andover Street along the Westerly boundary of Route 128, PBD, Mass., filed in accordance with Sections 11.4.8, 6.1, and 15.7 of the PBD zoning ordinance. PBD City Council Councilor Edward A. Charis, City Council President.
Well, giggles going on over there, but, you know. Can the petitioner please come to the podium, please state your name and address, and what you'd like to do?
That was a tough act to follow. I'm Grant Michael with Walton Signage, and I'm here in regards to the special permit for the sign at the North Shore Mall. Basically, there's an existing sign on the highway that currently has the North Shore Mall in kind of a script writing, kind of a wave at the top of it, and has a digital message board on it. Simon Properties throughout the country is updating all of their properties with new signage, with a new logo kind of branding, and we're actually redoing, renovating all the signage on the property, the exterior and interior, just to kind of update the look. And so what they want to do is they want to reuse that existing structure, and what we're going to do is the bottom section that's kind of like a checkerboard right now, is just going to be painted a solid gray color, and then the top section, we're going to remove kind of the wave, or swoosh, whatever you'll call it, and put up a kind of a more rectangular modern style with the new font that Simon is branding all the properties with. So we're looking to just amend that sign. We're not changing the digital message center or touching anything like that. It's basically just a renovation on that top portion of the sign.
Is there anybody here who would like to speak in favor of the petitioner? Anybody here would like to speak in favor of the petitioner? One more time, in favor of the petitioner? Seeing none, is there anyone here who would like to speak in opposition? Anybody here who would like to speak in opposition? Seeing none, Counselor Charis.
Thank you, Chairman. By the renovations, you're not changing, as you talked about, the size?
No.
Just the look of the bottom and the top and the font?
Yeah, well, basically, that kind of like wave section that's up there, it is going to be kind of like boxed off, instead of the wave, just that wave, that top portion's coming off, and it's going to kind of be like cut in as a rectangle. And we did go ahead and get an engineering evaluation, because that one section will be kind of a little higher in that corner where it like swoops down, that will be filled in. But we went ahead and we did an engineering evaluation, and it passed all the engineering and stuff like that for the existing structure, so we won't be adding anything else than just that, like that top panel swap.
And by adding that top panel slot that you talked about, it's not raising it, it's actually going to be a limited, a little smaller?
Yeah, it's not going above the existing height, but it's going to take up a little bit more space, because it's going to fill in that wave, but it's not going to be any taller or any wider, no.
And by doing that, it's, obviously, you're going to make sure it's secure enough that it's not going to fall off, because it's an add-on compared to the original construction of the sign?
Yeah, like I said, we had a whole engineering analysis done by a professional licensed engineer, and they passed the new structure, and we're going to follow that to do all the new attachments, so it won't be any danger to anyone.
And the font is being block letter instead of the scripted. Do you find that because it's easier to read as you're driving?
That is their, so that font has been chosen by Simon, that is their new brand font. It's, I forget what font type it is, but all their properties, that's what we're using on all their properties around the country. It's a lot cleaner, crisper to read, kind of, you know, that North Shore Mall is kind of a tough kind of script letter. This is going to be nice, bold, it's clean, but it's the same, they're using the same font. They're finally branding their malls as Simon, and they've chosen that font style to like brand all their malls. They basically put the name of the mall on the signs, and then just put like a Simon Mall down at the bottom, and it's like kind of a most standard font, but it is, it's nice, clean, and easy to read.
And you're confident by doing this, you're not violating their original permit to put up the sign?
Yes, we believe so.
Counselor Manny Martin.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. And are you changing the direction of the sign?
No.
It's going to face exactly where it's facing right now?
Yeah, we're not changing any of the structure.
Okay.
Yeah.
And who owns the billboard? Excuse me, strike that. Who owns the digital reader board?
Simon.
Sorry?
Simon.
Simon does.
North Shore, well, yeah, it's probably under North Shore LLC.
Okay, so it's not maintained by a company, or it's not a outdoor, or?
No, it's not, it's not like Lamar, or like a Clear Channel.
Right.
No, that's their own, their own thing, yeah.
Okay, good, because the original permit was to...
There's one of those signs in their parking lot, I believe. I don't know if it's a digital one or not, but...
Oh, yes, there is, please. Niagara Falls.
Yeah.
Because the original permit that we approved back in November 2011 was for upgrades to an existing digital message board. And so my only, the only rub I have here is on the notice of the public hearing, if councilors take a look at it, they're calling it a billboard, the existing digital billboard.
Oh, it's just...
Right.
Yeah, that's how kind of the design firm kind of wrote that up, and probably my sign permit person just kind of wrote that up, but it's not like a billboard.
Right, so I just want to make sure that the language on the special permit does not reflect the word billboard, because it's not a billboard. It's a, I think it falls under our zoning that it's a digital reader board, maybe. So I just want to make sure, because, you know, we have a few other digital reader boards throughout the city, and I don't want special permit glitch to, you know, set precedent that these reader boards could now be billboards, because we made a glitch. So I just want to make sure that we get that right. And that is all I have. Thank you.
Any other counselors? Counselor Charis.
I'd like to close the public hearing.
Print the motion to close the public hearing. All in favor, any opposed, vote. Counselor Charis.
I'd like to move to approve, approve of the special permit for seeking an amendment to the special permit 20/2011 by modifying the design of the existing digital sign reader board, cross out billboard, reader board, signed by the change in metal panels of the existing frame and installation, installing of the new channel letter set, said at 210 Andover, along with the Wesley's border of Route 128, PBD, Mass., as filed in accordance with Section 11.4.8, comma, 6 dot 1, comma, and 15 dot 7 of the PBD zoning ordinance. So a move. Does that...
Yes, and I think, and I may have misspoke, I'm looking at the original permit, it says digital message board. So if that could be the language, then that would coincide with the original permit. And thank you very much, Mrs. Charis.
So be set.
Clerk will make change to the record. On the motion, any discussion? Seeing none, roll call.
Counselors O'Neal.
Yes.
McGinn.
Yes.
Gould.
Yes.
Sassla.
Yes.
Mazzullis.
Yes.
Manning-Martin.
Yes.
Rozigmal.
Yes.
Turco.
Yes.
Melville.
Yes.
Charis.
Yes.
Gravel.
Yes.
Motion carries 11 to nothing.
Move to 4B, would the clerk please read the notice?
Notice is hereby given that the City Council of the City of PBD, acting as a special permit granting authority, will conduct a public hearing on Thursday evening, April 28, 2018, at 7:30 PM in the Frank Wiggan Auditorium, City Hall, 24 Lowell Street, PBD, Mass., on the application from Melissa R. Guaven, 558 Lowell Street, PBD, Mass., for a special permit, seeking to amend special permit 19-2015 to increase the maximum amount of dogs allowed under a kennel license from 30 to 40 at said 558 Lowell Street, PBD, Mass., as filed in accordance with Sections 4.2.5, 6.1, and 15.7 of the PBD zoning ordinance. PBD City Council Councilor Edward A. Charis, City Council President.
Would the petitioner please state your name and address for the record, and let us know what you're looking to do?
My name is Melissa Guaven. I'm at 558 Lowell Street in PBD. I am looking to get my kennel permit from 30 dogs to 40 dogs.
Is there any, anyone who would like to speak in favor? Anyone in the audience like to speak in favor? Anyone in the audience like to speak opposed? Seeing none, Counselor Sassla.
Thank you, Counsel President. So Melissa, otherwise known as the dog mother, is before us tonight to increase her license. She started off with 10, and she went up, I believe it was to 20, and now she's before us to go to, excuse me, from 10 to 30 to 40. I did go up over the weekend. I hadn't been there in a couple of years, just to refamiliarize myself. Just, she is basically, as you pull onto Route 1, north Lowell Street, excuse me, south, that's where her business is located. I think it speaks volumes that she's been there for, you know, over two years, and there's not a neighbor here that has any issues. You know, well, someone had 30 dogs, and they live next to me, I might be a little bit concerned, especially if they go to 40. But all kidding aside, she runs a great operation, she does a lot of charitable work, and I know she finds dogs for other communities when they run away, and she's been on the news recently in Everett, she helped out a situation there. But I have no issue with increasing this from 30 to 40. And in reality, what actually happened is we were just coming off a school vacation week, and sometimes when she has a school vacation week, that's when it gets a little bit, you know, it gets tight on the numbers. So she came, she came before us to do everything by the book, and as I said, I'll be fully supporting this, and I'm happy to have her stay in the city of business to see her business grow. Thank you.
Counselor Manny Martin.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I agree, I support this 100%, and what I'm noticing in the application is you have one for, your special permit's for 30 dogs, and then I noticed in the application, the animal control officer authorized by the Commonwealth of Massachusetts thinks you have 35. So, so then the animal, if there was a problem with 35, that would have been noted, so there certainly isn't a problem for 35, so I don't have, that would have been noted by the Commonwealth authorization. So I don't have a problem with 40 either, and I can't commend you enough for all the work that you do saving dogs. I follow you on Facebook, and you do great work, and you don't look for any accolades for it, you do it out of the love of your heart. And I'll tell you, I was just in Aruba a couple of weeks ago, and I go down there every year, and I'm noticing that there are a lot of stray dogs all around Aruba now, and they're just, it's really sad. And when you get to the airport, they're actually putting up flyers now to say, can you please take a puppy back with you to, because there will be somebody that will adopt it when you land, and they'll, but they want somebody to take, you know, to pay to bring the puppy back, because there's just so many. And it's happening all over the place. But it's good people like you with a big heart that, you know, take care of these dogs, and you run a great business. I know, I refer a lot of people to you, and I wouldn't if I didn't trust the business. You do great work, and keep up the good work, and keep saving those dogs.
Any others? Any others? Counselor Sassla.
Thank you. Under suspension rules, motion to receive, item 8G.
Heard the motion. All in favor, any opposed, it's a vote.
Thank you. I'd like to make the motion to close the public hearing.
Heard the motion. All in favor, any opposed, it's a vote.
I'd like to make a motion to approve from Melissa Guaven, 558 Lowell Street, PBD, Mass., for a special permit, seeking to amend special permit 19-2015 to increase the maximum amount of dogs allowed under kennel license from 30 to 40 at said 558 Lowell Street, PBD, Mass., as filed in accordance with Sections 4.2.5, 6.1, and 15.7 of the PBD zoning ordinance. So move.
Motion, roll call.
Counselors O'Neal.
Yes.
McGinn.
Yes.
Gould.
Yes.
Sassla.
Yes.
Mazzullis.
Yes.
Manning-Martin.
Yes.
Rozigmal.
Yes.
Turco.
Yes.
Melville.
Yes.
Gravel.
Yes.
Charis.
Yes.
Motion carries 11 to nothing.
Thanks, have a good night.
4C, would the clerk please read the notice?
Notice is hereby given that the City Council of the City of PBD, acting as a special permit granting authority, will conduct a public hearing on Thursday evening, April 26, 2018, at 7:30 PM in the Frank Wiggan Auditorium, City Hall, 24 Lowell Street, PBD, Mass., on the application from Holden Oil, Inc., 91 Rear, Linfield Street, PBD, Mass., for a special permit, seeking to operate a convenience store in a proposed new building at 91 Linfield Street, PBD, Mass., as filed in accordance with Sections 4.2.5, 6.1, and 15.7 of the PBD zoning ordinance. PBD City Council Councilor Edward A. Charis, City Council President.
Would the petitioner please state your name and address, and what you'd like to do?
There you go. Good evening, my name is Charles Martins, attorney for the petitioner. My address is 81 Main Street in PBD. Holden Oil and the property owner, 91 Linfield Street, PBD LLC, is in the process of continuing their overall renovation of that Holden Oil site. Couple of years ago, I was before this board, and we got a special permit, and we purchased and renovated 91 Rear Linfield Street, which is the old Gagnon Building, and converted it into a state-of-the-art building where Holden Oil transferred their operation services from the front and moved over to 91 Rear. Since then, the building that exists there, right on the street, has been vacant, other than the small parcel on the left side where the gas station store is. We're before the board to get a special permit. We're in a zone where it requires a special permit to get a convenience store business operating. On Monday, we were before the ZBA to get in variance. What we are attempting to do is to renovate that building. It's a 1924 building. It's a two-story building with approximately 3,100 square feet. We are going to, if allowed, build a new building, one story, state-of-the-art, and continue the operations of the gas station as well as a convenience store. The square footage will be about the same, and we are hoping to then open up a convenience store. Right now, there is a special permit for a gas station service, which has been in operations for a long time, since 1924 at least.
Is anyone in the audience who would like to speak in favor? Anyone in the audience in favor? Anyone in opposition? Hearing none, Counselor Turco.
Thank you, Mr. President. Through you to Attorney Martins. Before I start, can you just address what you needed the variance for? And I'm aware that you had to move the building closer to the liquor store side, but can you just...
Yes, we are, the canopy and the gas station pumps will stay where they remain, but we are taking the footprint and moving off to the right side, and the setback requirement was 25 feet, and on Monday, we requested and got permission for it to be 7 feet. The parking spaces that were there on that right side now will be moved over to the left side.
Okay, so there'll be an equal amount of parking spaces that were previously on the site. And I guess Chuck and I had discussed earlier that because it's going to be so close to the liquor store, that will be one-way in through that curb cut between the liquor store and the gas station, and then as you come out, you'd come out on the other side by the pumps, correct?
That was addressed by the ZBA also. There was a concern, and that's affirmative, we will make it a one-way.
Okay, so with all that being said, I can't believe what they've done with gas stations these days. We've all seen them, and I think this will be an asset to the neighborhood. I think, although I do like your old building, I like the old style of it, but I think this will be wonderful. It's in the BN zone, and I looked for everything that I could find in regards, and it's all addressed in the PBD zoning. So again, Chuck and I have discussed what I would expect, and it's just basically adherence to the requirements of the BN zoning, and I'll list those. The only question in regards to that, and as far as my conditions, would be the landscape, and the landscaping, Chuck, if I understand it correctly, is going to be reviewed by Community Development for approval?
That's correct.
And you don't have a final plan for the front landscaping as of yet?
Right, we have not put the final landscaping plan together. We were waiting for the variance, so that's still being, still being worked out.
Perfect. Thank you very much. And with that, you know, before I turn it over to the council, I just want to say, so those listings in the PBD zoning ordinance are 11.5.1, which references sign, signs in the BN district. So those are all clearly laid out, in case anybody had questions about signage. The Section 11.5.1H and I specifically reference signs in a gasoline filling station, and those are all clearly laid out. And then lastly, Section 10.5.3B references landscaping in the BN district, and those are to be addressed with planning, so those will be my conditions. And also, I noticed on the site that you don't have a dumpster on site, but it is on the site owned by the gas station, excuse me, the liquor store, which...
No, the liquor store has its own dumpster. The dumpster we use is way in the back, behind the, our office building in the back. They empty the trash with a pushcot and bring it all the way to the rear of the, the rear of the property, way in the back. So we don't intend to put a dumpster any closer.
Okay, and that was my only other requirement, is that if you do move it, that it's side impervious, surrounded by a side impervious structure. Thank you.
Counselor Gravel. I had a chance to review with Chuck the plans that he's putting forward, and I just want to comment, not on the plans, because I think the plans speak for themselves. You know, the Holden's will always look to put up quality structures to, you know, live in harmony with the neighborhood, and while Counsel Turco may miss the old building, I'm sure nobody will miss it more than Arthur. I suggested to Chuck that he send Arthur to Florida when they, when they do the renovations, because Arthur will be trying to preserve the front. But it seems like a great plan. I know that some of the ideas for the convenience store are to put, you know, local products, and, which is a wonderful thing, you know, another way of helping to promote local businesses within the city. And the thing that I have to say about the Holden's, outside of the fact that everybody here knows what they do for the city in terms of the generation 1, 2, 3, and now 4, they have been so respectful of every nonprofit, every group that comes to them for support, that you can never say enough about enough thank yous for what you've done. But the thing that impresses me most is when they say they're going to do something, they do it right. Unlike a lot of people who develop in this city that, you know, tell you they'll put up, you know, landscaping and then put up, you know, shrubs. You know, these folks not only put up what they say they're going to put up, but you drive by there, I drive by there every day, and you see Tommy or Chuck, sometimes his dad, they're out there cleaning the front, they're out there making sure that it's represented well, and it's, and it's a real place to look at, you know, it's not, it's not an obstruction. So clearly, I appreciate everything you do, Chuck, and I intend to support this 100%, and thank you for being such a good community member.
Counselor Gould.
Thank you. I can do nothing but echo Counselor Gravel's words. Thank you. Chuck and the... Thank you, Chuck, and the entire Holden family for everything you do for PBD. And it looks like it's going to be a wonderful spot to work ourselves into getting a new building there. Mr. Turco, I know it's going to be hard for you, but will you call John down on the day you demo it? It takes-
If you want it.
But thank you for what you do, Chuck. Thank you.
I heard there might be a Treadwell substation there or something.
Any other counselors?
And I know that if there ever is a problem, your director buddy will certainly let you know immediately, right?
Yes.
Being sent, John?
Moves to close the public hearing.
You heard the motion. All in favor? Any opposed? It's a vote.
Mr. President, moves to approve the application from Holden Oil Inc., 91 Rear, Linfield Street, PBD Mass, for a special permit seeking to operate a convenience store in a proposed new building at 91 Linfield Street, PBD Mass, as filed in accordance with Sections 4.2.5, 6.1, and 15.7 of the PBD zoning ordinance with the following conditions: Landscape plan shall be approved by Community Development, 1. 2. Adhere to Sections 11.5.1C, which references signs in the BN district. 3. Adhere to Sections 11.5.1, Sections H&amp;I, which specifically reference signs in a gasoline filling station. 4. In the event a dumpster is added to the site, it shall be placed out of view from general public through the use of fencing or site impervious structures.
You heard the motion. Roll call. Oh, I'm sorry. Counselor McGinn.
Thank you, Mr. President. Just on the motion through you to Counselor Turco, there was a late communication from the Fire Department. I don't know if you want to bring that in at this point. I doubt it has any bearing on your motion.
Did not see that. Moves to receive late communication from PBD Fire Department.
PBD Fire Department. The nature of that is new buildings shall comply with all fire, light, and safety codes applicable for its occupancy and use group.
Thank you, Counselor McGinn. And, Mr. President, could we add that as Condition 5, the conditions brought forth by the Fire Department?
You heard the motion. All in favor? Any opposed? It's a vote? Any? Roll call.
Counselors O'Neal?
Yes.
Yes.
Gould?
Yes.
Sasla?
Yes.
Mazzulis?
Yes.
Manning Martin?
Yes.
Rozignol?
Yes.
Turco?
Yes.
Melville?
Yes.
Gavell?
Yes.
Charis?
Yes.
Motion carries 11 to nothing.
4D, would the clerk please read the notice?
Notice is hereby given that the City Council of the City of PBD will conduct a public hearing on Thursday evening, April 26, 2018, at 7:30 PM in the Frank Lloyd Wiggins Auditorium, City Hall 24 Lowell Street, PBD Mass, in accordance with the provisions of Chapter 40A, Section 5 of the Massachusetts General Laws, to consider amending the zoning map of the City of PBD as follows, be it ordained by the City Council of the City of PBD. Section 1, that the zoning map of the City of PBD entitled City of PBD zoning map adopted April 28, 2011, as amended and approved by the Planning Board on October 6, 2016, is hereby further amended as follows: To relocate the current BN zoning district line to coincide with the property line of Parcel 101 of Map 101 Parcel 24A and continue straight back to the rear property line of 91 Linfield Street, PBD LLC. The front BN zoning line to move approximately 35 feet west, and the rear BN zoning line would also move approximately 90 feet west, as shown on a plan of land prepared by Eastern Land Survey Associates dated February 9, 2018, prepared for Charles E. Holden. A copy of the proposed amendment and reference plan of land is available for public inspection at the City Clerk's Office, 24 Lowell Street, PBD Mass, during normal business hours. Section 2, all ordinances or parts of ordinances inconsistent herewith are hereby repealed. Section 3, this ordinance shall take effect as provided by law. PBD City Council Counselor Edward R. Charis, City Council President.
Would the petitioner please state your name and address and what you would like to do for the record?
Yes, my name is Charles Martins with the office address of 81 Main Street, PBD. I'm here on behalf of the petitioner, 91 Linfield Street, PBD LLC. Again, as a continuation of a couple of years ago when we purchased 91 Rear and reassessed what was going on in that whole area, we came across the fact that the pertinent parcel has a dangling part that's zoned for R1B, and that the dangling parcel that we're trying to rezone today as BN. And that sliver is, right now, where if you're fortunate enough, if you can remember in the hot days when you barbecue and you go to Holden's to fill up your propane tank, that shed and that area right there, that back area, that sliver, that's what we are trying to get to BN zone. Right now, that parcel is both BN and R1B being taxed as a BN.
Anyone in the audience like to speak in favor? Anyone in the audience like to speak in favor? Anyone in the audience who would like to speak in opposed? Hearing none. Counselor Turco?
Thank you, Mr. President. So I took a hard look at this, and if the council remembers, some of you may remember, this partially came before us last year, but with some incorrect information, that the parcel on the north side was listed as owned by PBD Municipal Light, which it's, Counsel Manning thankfully pointed out that it's actually owned by the City of PBD and the care and custody of PMLP. I personally had a concern about extending the change in the zoning all the way through the City of PBD property, and Mr. Holden has addressed that, which is great. I don't have an issue. I think what we're doing here is we're changing a zoning line that, between parcels that are strictly owned by one person. These are his properties. They don't affect anybody, any other resident, per se. With that being said, Chuck, how long has the propane filling station been in that spot?
Pre-1955, I think, so it's been there a long time.
And that was the other item I took into consideration. It's been there for 60-s somewhat years or whatever it is, and it belongs there. So what we're essentially doing is correcting an issue with the zoning line, and I think moving that zoning line further to the west side helps not only Mr. Holden correct an issue with his properties, you know, in the event he may sell them or in the event he would like to do work on that property, but in general, I don't have an issue with this. I think, like I said, it's a correction that needed to be done long ago, and you are paying the commercial tax rate on the property as it stands, so thank you.
Counselor, can I have a motion to accept 8O?
Moves to receive Item 8O, which is the vote of the Planning Board from 41918.
You heard the motion. All in favor? Any opposed? It's a vote. Counselor Turco?
I'm sorry.
Counselor Manning?
Thank you. I'm just asking him to actually point out where the line is so that I'm not looking at the wrong one. Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and I wanted to thank Mr. Holden and Mr. Martins for your patience in going back and correcting those things that were an issue last year. I just raised them because it was just cleaner, and I'm glad that things worked out, and I support this 100%. Thank you.
Counselor Turco?
Mr. President, just can I ask Mr. Holden to just hold that photograph up so that you could actually show the council? And I think most of us have been to Holden Oil, but if you can just address where the propane filling stations are in-
The existing line is right on the edge of the fence here, so the propane platform is right here. So that it's been on the wrong side of the line for 60-plus years. So it's really just an issue of trying to get it for what it's always been. We just moved the line from here to here. My house is the abutting house where I live, and so it's just going right down my property line. On the front, on the street end of it, it's landscape. We maintain a buffer there anyway, so Martha wouldn't let me cut the trees down or do anything with it anyway, so that's the way it's going to stay, but it's more to the back is where the issue is.
Counselor Turco? Oh, Counsel-
No, I just wanted to say that having been down on the property and seeing the situation, it was clearly, you know, when we had the zoning maps open before, it was clearly an oversight on our part that we didn't correct some of these types of issues, where we brought the lines into alignment with the properties so that some of the old stuff carried over. You know, the fact that it's been used for, it's been existing non-conforming use within an R1B for that period of time, and yet he's paid the commercial rate on it. It's been treated like a BN and a commercial property, so as far as I'm concerned, I think this is just a way, a good way of correcting the record, getting the map straight, and solving problems that could occur down the road if there was any need to make some modifications. It's now clearly going to be defined as a commercial property in the BN zone, so I think it's a great idea. Thank you.
Counselor Turco?
I was going to give it to the council anyway, Counselor Charis, so thank you.
Any other counselors? You said Counselor Turco?
Mr. President, move to close the public hearing.
You heard the motion. All in favor? Any opposed? It's a vote. Counsel?
Mr. President, move to amend Section 1, that the zoning map of the City of PBD entitled City of PBD zoning map adopted April 28, 2011, as amended and approved by the Planning Board on October 6, 2016, is hereby amended as follows: To relocate the current BN zoning district line to coincide with the property line of Parcel 101/024A and continue straight back to the rear property line of 91 Linfield Street, PBD LLC. The front BN zoning line to move approximately 35 feet west, and the rear BN zoning line would also move approximately 90 feet west, as shown on a plan of land prepared by Eastern Land Survey Associates dated February 9, 2018, prepared for Charles E. Holden. A copy of the proposed amendment and reference plan of land is available for public inspection at the City Clerk's Office, 24 Lowell Street. Move to adopt and advertise.
You heard the motion. Roll call.
Counselors O'Neal?
Yes.
McGinn?
Yes.
Gould?
Yes.
Sasla?
Yes.
Mazzulis?
Yes.
Manning Martin?
Yes.
Rozignol?
Yes.
Turco?
Yes.
Melville?
Yes.
Gavell?
Yes.
Charis?
Yes.
Motion carries 11 to nothing.
4E, would the clerk please read the notice?
Notice is hereby given that the City Council of the City of PBD acting as a special permit grant authority will conduct a public hearing on Thursday evening, March, will conduct a public hearing on Thursday evening, April 26, 2018, at 7:30 PM in the Frank Lloyd Wiggins Auditorium, City Hall 24 Lowell Street, PBD Mass, on the application from William Scoris, Rear 170 Lynn Street, PBD Mass, for a special permit to convert the first-floor restaurant tavern to eight apartments at 59-61 Walnut Street, PBD Mass, as filed in accordance with Sections 1.5, 6.1, and 15.7 of the PBD zoning ordinance. PBD City Council Counselor Edward R. Charis, City Council President.
Would the petitioner please state your name and address, and who's the one you're here?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Mr. President, my name is John Kelty. I'm an attorney. I'm a of offices at 40 Lowell Street in PBD, Massachusetts. I appear this evening on behalf of William Scoris with respect to seeking a special permit regarding converting the first floor, which is formerly a restaurant tavern, to eight apartments. I'm respectfully requesting this evening that this matter be continued, perhaps to your meeting of 5:24. I'm acutely aware of the fact that our ward counselor is adamantly opposed to such a conversion. We have recently been approached by a party who has approached twice in the last 10 days, 14 days, and that party would like to pursue use of the first floor as the restaurant that it used to be. We currently have no license for use at the premises. However, that license is still available at the licensing board. It has not been given to any other party. It was not renewed due to the lack of use of the license, but with a new party coming forward who would operate in that premises, I feel confident that if we can come to an agreement with the premises, that I would be withdrawing this request for special permit perhaps as soon as 5:24, and trying to move forward with the resumption of the use of the premises as a restaurant. So I'm respectfully requesting that.
Counselor Mazzulis?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I think that's a reasonable request. Counselor, we have a late communication here that-
Yes, we have a late communication from the-
Do you have a motion to accept?
Yeah, motion received, Mr. Chairman.
You heard the motion. All in favor? Any opposed? Vote?
I have a copy of that communication, and what it suggests is that the lodging room license for the second floor is still before this body, and that there are two issues with respect to, that need to be worked out, and Mr. Scoris has assured me that he will meet with the Fire Department and resolve those issues as early as next week.
Counselor Mazzulis?
Okay, Mr. Chairman, at this moment, I'd like to recess this till the 5:24, so move.
You heard the motion to continue? All in favor? Any opposed? It's a vote. Thank you.
Thank you.
Counselor, Counselor, yeah. Who's next? 4F, clerk, please read the notice? The next to our recess. Okay. Petitioner, would you please state your name and address, and who's the one you're here?
Thank you. My name is John Kelty. I'm an attorney with offices at 40 Lowell Street in PBD, Massachusetts. I appear before you this evening with respect to Item F, which is a zoning amendment to the Schedule 425 uses. This was an effort to try to resolve an issue which has arisen down in the IL zoning district, specifically pertaining to 58 Pulaski Street. The, I had placed, I had placed some language before the commission, before the council, and at our subcommittee meeting, it was apparent that that needed some massaging and revision. We were specifically trying to revise the zoning ordinance such that retail would be allowed in that zoning district, whereas it had been allowed prior to 2013. I have realized from the subcommittee meeting that there were some shortcomings with respect to my proposal. I would respectfully request that rather than, I mean, you can certainly report out that the committee did not favor the language that we had placed before the committee, but that perhaps we could continue to work on some alternative language such that we could resolve the issue of trying to encourage some small retail users to locate in the industrial- parks. So I guess that my suggestion is that the council respectfully continue this matter so that we can work with the subcommittee on some alternative language and try to move forward with that language. I had suggested to Community Development Department and to several of the counselors that were sitting in on that particular subcommittee meeting, I had suggested some language which might bring us closer to resolution of this issue, because I think the future of this particular park at 58 -- at Pulaski Street is that we want to encourage some kind of limited retail users so that we're not always dealing with trucking companies and, you know, heavy industrial users. So it's certainly up to the council as to what this council wants to do with respect to this matter, but I would respectfully ask that this matter too be continued so that we can continue to work on some compromised language.
Counselor Mazzullis, I know this is your ward, but it came out of Counselor Gould's subcommittee. If you mind, if I refer to him first.
Thank you, Mr. President. There was much debate in our subcommittee, and we -- at that night, we decided to keep it in subcommittee, but would be more than amendable to opening it up and having discussion and see if we can come to some resolution. Attorney Kelty.
Sure. That works certainly for us.
Tim, if we can schedule that industrial community development meeting, what -- I don't know what your schedule is for the 10th. Do the 24th if you can. But I --
We'll work out a date.
I'd welcome some feedback right here with fellow counselors. If you recall, it was a very interesting discussion that came up, so the prohibitive part of it was we don't want to change the, you know, for the whole city, and we don't want to be spot zoning, so we need to come up with some language. I defer to my Counselor Turco.
Counselor Turco.
Thank you, Mr. President. Through you to Counselor Gould. I just want to be sure. I may be wrong, but I thought we voted that down 5 to 0, and we came out with a negative recommendation. I don't think we left it in committee.
I do recall, you're exactly right. We did vote it down, and it's not in subcommittee, correct? Okay.
Through you to Counselor Gould. We could just refer the issue back to subcommittee, I would imagine.
We can. Yeah, we can. Only if it's the will of fellow members, though.
Counselor Mazzullis. Then Counselor Manning.
If, Karen, if you shut it down in committee, I'm certainly not gonna pass it here, knowing the committee. And I'm gonna go against the committee. I'm not willing to do that. But if this is something that you feel needs further discussion, you know, I'm willing to send it back to committee. Myself, I mean, everybody has their feeling on what should go on in their own ward, but, you know, I want to work along with the committee also, so I'm in favor of sending it back to the committee. So that's my feeling on this, and if we can come up with something, so be it. If not, it'll come back before us, and we can take action on it.
Counselor Manning-Martin.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I think it's a good point by Counselor Turco that these items are essentially dead, so I was curious as to why they would be forced with no additional information. So if I might suggest, whatever your next attempt is to work with the council and vice versa, to resolve the issue, that you put something forward and resubmit, because to resubmit these two items, they've already been killed in committee. So if you want to try again, we need to try something new and different to come to a resolution, not kind of breathing life into something we outright rejected. So I would just suggest you come up with whatever idea that you may have that you want to discuss, to put it before the council and restart again with that idea. Thank you.
Counselor Grevell.
Yes, I think procedurally, it's right to be here right now, because what happened was this opened with content being given to us in a public hearing, which at the time I challenged, because all zoning typically goes through ICD first, and then it's brought out, and it was requested. But there was some issues about when it had appeared at year-end, and we had to make -- we had to provide it through a special hearing. So literally, it was taken in public hearing, referred out to subcommittee, voted out of subcommittee, and, you know, reported out of subcommittee as a non-accepter, but to finish the process, it actually has to come back to where it started from, which was -- and be voted down in a special hearing in a regular meeting, and then it's done. It's completed its cycle. Right now, it's dangling out there as it was sort of a recessed special hearing. So I don't think it's wrong being here. I think to close it, we -- if we close it, we basically take that permit, that hearing, out of commission for a couple of years. So I don't know, you know, I just know that it's not -- it's here properly before us, and the only thing we can do is either keep it like this, vote it down, or send it back to the subcommittee. That seems odd to me, to send it back to the subcommittee when it's been voted down out of subcommittee. I was gonna suggest that there is -- there was a previous motion made a meeting ago to open up the table of uses for review in subcommittee, where it might be probably properly considered rather than through a hearing like this. And at that point in time, you know, you could review language associated with the zoning ordinance through the committee as a result of the council's desire to have it looked at, because there are a number of issues about the IL that came up. And I think the biggest concern that everyone here had the night it was voted down in subcommittee was you were talking about big-box retails up to 50,000 square feet, and if you simply put it into the IL, even by special permit, you open up the Pandora's Box, and that was the concern. But there are other avenues that are available to the council to address situations like this. If we are looking for small retail, or we are looking for other types of uses in the IL, the way that we would -- we could do that without affecting the whole table is to consider overlays in the certain ILs within the city and create overlay districts. That's one avenue that we could take, but that's why I had wanted to refer the table back to subcommittee so that we don't take it as a part of a, you know, like a public hearing, because it's, you know, this, you only have one avenue, yes or no. And I think the subcommittee already voted no, so it should properly close itself, and then the issue could come up again in a review of the table of uses in the subcommittee. That's my opinion.
Counselor Turco.
Counselor Grevell addressed everything plus, so I'm good. Thank you.
Thank you, and also the use of drug sales in the IL was also a major sticking point that wasn't mentioned. So if we want to just put this to vote, and again, put something else before us, I think that's what we should just do and move on.
Or the petitioner could withdraw. Am I correct, counselors? Petitioner?
I believe that is true. I could withdraw, but I don't know that that makes a whole lot of sense. I mean, if I were to start from scratch, I would try to sort of dovetail with this issue that's coming up with respect to film and things like that, so I would try to probably incorporate my use. I don't think that if the -- if this particular zone change is voted down, I don't think I face two-year prohibition coming back.
I was just thinking that myself, because it's not a -- you're not looking for a special permit.
It's not a special permit.
So that wouldn't be impacted that way.
Right.
But I think the better way is to clear the book on this one, and then actually go forward with the motion that was already made to open the table of uses, and we'll have hearings on the table of use specific to the IL, and, you know, at that point in time, I think if it's the wish of the council to look at other zoning areas, you know, we could look at other zoning area tables as well. There's nothing that precludes us from doing that.
What is wish? Move for roll. Do I have a motion to close the public hearing? Heard the motion. All in favor? Any opposed? It's a vote. Roll call. Do I have a motion?
Mr. Chairman, I'm gonna turn it over to you, David. You seem to know what you're talking about over there.
Before I do that, Counselor Grevell, Counselor Gould actually had his hand up. Counselor Grevell.
The motion is -- it's going to be a motion to the positive, and you vote it the way you want to. The motion is going to be -- whoops, gotta move up one. One, four. F, sorry. The motion is going to be that City Council, City of PBD, modify Section 1 that the zoning ordinance of City of PBD entitled City of PBD zoning ordinance adopted April 28, 2011, amended through July 18, 2017, is hereby further amended as follow by amending Section 4.2.5 uses by adding the designation of SP in the IL light industrial zone in the column for retail facility of less than 50,000 square feet. Section 2, all ordinance or part of ordinance is inconsistent herewith, are hereby repealed, and Section 3, this ordinance shall take effect as provided by law. So moved.
Recommendation is?
So you're recommending to adopt this advertise?
Yeah, the recommendation would be to adopt this advertise. You heard the motion? Roll call on the motion?
Mr. Chairman.
I'm sorry. Counselor Manning.
Thank you. Through you to Counselor Grevell. My concern, Counselor Grevell, is if we put it forward in an affirmative and then we vote no, we haven't listed any reason why we're voting no in the language. We learned this one in the past. So if he takes it to court, we put him both of these that are -- the other one that's coming up next. If we put it in the affirmative without reason why we're denying it, he's gonna say they didn't offer any reason why they denied it, and then the judge may approve it. That's happened to us in the past. So would I -- could I suggest you put in the language, I would say, the reasons why we're denying it, and list the reasons why we're denying it, and then everyone votes? Because otherwise, he's going to court with both of these.
I'm really glad you feel that way, but I'm not.
Then let me, for the record, Allison, I'm gonna change it to a motion to deny, and I'm going to add that the reason for the denial is that the opinion of the -- based on a vote of the subcommittee of industrial and community development was that there was no desire to have large retail facilities in all of the IL zones, and that it would be improperly considered as a use, and that also there were concerns about not enough information to determine if there could be a proper use that could be determined. So I just, I hear what Counselor Manning-Martin is saying, and just let's make it a motion to deny, and we will add that the reason for the denial was the subcommittee's vote.
You've now heard the motion. All in favor? Oh, excuse me. You heard the motion? Roll call.
Counselors O'Neal.
Yes.
McGinn.
Yes.
Gould.
Yes.
Sassla.
Yes.
Mazzullis.
Yes.
Yes, and thank you, David.
Rozignol.
Yes.
Turco.
Yes.
Melville.
Yes.
Grevell.
Yes.
Sharrest.
Yes.
Motion to deny carries 11 to nothing.
Hearing 4G, will the clerk please read the notice?
Same scenario. We have a recess public hearing that came modified with a negative recommendation.
I'm gonna cut to the chase and go to Mr. Grevell, Counselor Grevell. This is the same scenario that we just went through?
Yes, so we're in a -- this is, you're bringing it back, because it's a recessed item that was the same situation. We're back in the public hearing, are we?
So I think if the petitioner, the opportunity, can you please state your name and address?
My name is John Kelty. I'm an attorney. I have offices at 40 Lowell Street here in PBD, Massachusetts, and I have requested an ordinance amendment to the zoning ordinance in which we would alter the applicability of inclusionary zoning by increasing the trigger number, that is, at what point is inclusionary zoning applicable to single-family subdivisions and single-family development of single-family zoned lots? The committee was adamantly opposed to this. I believe that was another five-zip vote. As such, I'm not asking for any continuance, any amendment, and I would ask the council to vote on this amendment.
Unless someone else has strong opinions on this, Counselor Grevell?
I'd like to make a motion that -- to deny the -- excuse me. Motion to close public hearing.
All in favor? Any opposed? It's a vote. Counselor Grevell?
Motion to deny the request for the change in zoning ordinance in Section 1, that the zoning ordinance of the City of PBD entitled City of PBD zoning ordinance adopted April 28, 2011, amendment through July 18, 2017, is hereby further amended as followed by amending Section 6.11.2. dash A. Applicability A general by deleting the word 15 in the last sentence of Section A and replacing with the word 30, resulting in the following paragraph. A general, the revisions of the ordinance shall apply in zoning districts R2, R3, R4, R5, BN, DDD, and BC to all residential developments that involve the creation of eight or more housing units, whether rental or ownership, and shall apply to zoning districts R1, R1A, and R1B that involve the creation of 30 or more housing units. All ordinance, Section 2, all ordinance or parts of ordinance is consistent herewith, are hereby repealed, and Section 3, this ordinance shall take effect as provided by law. Our reason for denial is the subcommittee again felt that this was not in the best interest of the city, and that we're in need of affordable housing stock, and therefore we decided that we were gonna vote it down.
Heard the motion? Roll call.
Counselors O'Neal.
Yes.
McGinn.
Yes.
Gould.
Yes.
Sassla.
Yes.
Mazzullis.
Yes.
Manning-Martin.
Yes.
Rozignol.
Yes.
Turco.
Yes.
Melville.
Yes.
Grevell.
Yes.
Sharrest.
Yes.
Motion to deny carries 11 to nothing.
Thank you, counselors. Thank you, counselor. Go to Item 5, Industrial Community Development Subcommittee Report. Counselor Gould.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. We met a week ago tonight. Present was Counselor Rozignol, Counselor Melville, Counselor O'Neal sat in for Counselor Turco, Counselor Sharrest for Counselor McGinn, although both Counselor Turco and Counselor McGinn did come right after the start of the meeting. Mr. Belavant, Community Development Director, was here, and he explained what recommendation would be about changing the use table of film and TV
TV studios to include film studio. Good discussion took place. Mr. Bellevance will amend the request and we will leave approval of filming to film liaison, excuse me, film liaison, and that passed 5 to nothing. So moved.
Ad-hoc Committee on Drug Education-
There's a second half of that, Mr. Chairman.
Oh, I'm sorry, Counselor.
That's okay. See if I can understand my notes. We are going to leave studios and galleries in committee. That's the second half of my notes. So moved, Mr. President.
Counsel, both items were left in committee, weren't they?
Yes.
Yeah.
For Mr. Bellevance to come back with some recommendations on both. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Ad-hoc Committee on Drug Education, Counselor Manning Martin, please.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Yes, the Drug Education and Awareness Committee met this evening. Present, myself as chair and counselors Rozignol and Turco joined, as well as other members of the council, and we, we were joined by Peter Cronin of the Meadow Golf Course and we discussed a long drive competition that we will be having at the Meadow on June 23rd at 5:30. And from there, we will be going over to Metro Bowl for the awards and the conclusion and celebration. And the long drive competition will be dedicated to Dan Pimenta, our friend and firefighter who passed away this year, recently, within the last year. I think it's actually up on a year anniversary. So it'll be dedicated to Dan. And we talked about just generating interest and ideas and getting sponsors and we'll get more information out shortly and to get the public involved. And it's going to be a community event and lots of fun. So that's a report of progress, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Counselor. I also, I know during the meeting I talked about asking the mayor to be in a helmet and in a pads to be, you know, aimed at with a golf ball. But I did have a communication this shortly ago that the reporter from the Salem News has volunteered to take place with that helmet and pads. So we have a present second up.
Alrighty then. That's a report of progress.
Joint Human Services Industrial Communication Community, Counselor Manning Martin.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. We had a very educational and important meeting this evening, a joint meeting with Industrial and Community Development and Human Services Committee. The entire council was present for that, as were members from this City Hall, Kurt Bellevance, the Director of Community Development, Stacy Benson, Assistant Director of Community Development, Amory Burns, the Director of Public Housing Authority, as well as two members of the public residents of the Tannery Apartments, Gail Kovitz and Dennis McCarthy were kind enough to come and speak. And we talked about a lot of moving parts of the affordable housing issue, our affordable housing stock, our plan moving forward to create affordable housing and meet our 10% and also the situation of the Tannery changing ownership soon and the 239 affordable units that are accredited to our housing stock. We talked about the potential of losing them. But the information that was put forward to us is that the effort with the state is that we maintain those numbers and we'll have more information May 31st. And Mr. Bellevance can report back to us at a subsequent hearing as to the progress of the sale of that and the renovation of that and the future of the Tannery with respect to the affordable housing units. And the positive note was that the state is involved and the company that will do the renovations is a company that is allowed to be in that situation because they are committed to providing affordable housing. So it was a very important meeting and the counselors had a great discussion with some educated people where this is their business. And I think that it's great that we're having these discussions and that we continue to work together as a community to not only provide affordable housing for our residents, but also look to maintain our 10% affordability under 40B so that we can move the city in the right direction in both those three cards. Thank you very much, Mr. Chairman.
Counselor, thank you, Counselor. Committee of the Hall regarding the industrial aggregate industrials, there was a meeting of the Hall. The representatives of the industry had, was here talking about blasting, the financial report in year and other issues. Counselor O'Neal had spoke. I'm going to turn it over to Counselor O'Neal now. You can give a recap on your words.
Thank you, Mr. President. As required in the special permit approved in October of 2002, City Council was required to review the annual report of aggregate industries. All councils are given the full annual report containing the operational details and summaries of air quality, water quality tests, and noise monitoring. Board of Health reviewed as required for the air quality and sound monitoring and found that they were in compliance as noted in their memo in the package. We had some good questions from the counselors and also discussed issues related to initial blasts at the site earlier this year, a few weeks ago, excuse me. We also talked about the possibility of having another seismograph to one of, to one of the budding properties to get a better read in a different position than typical, which is usually situated between a structure and a quarry. The council approved the 27 annual report 11 to none. And lastly, Aggregate Industries has offered an invitation for counselors to tour the facility and I'll send out an email to the group for possible dates if they want to take part in that. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor.
There was a motion to approve the aggregate industries. There was a motion-
There was a- Sorry, apologize, Mr. President. We need to, need to vote on the 27 annual report of aggregate industries. So moved.
You've heard the motion, roll call, please.
Counselors O'Neal.
Yes.
McGinn.
Yes.
Gould.
Yes.
Sassla.
Yes.
Mazzulis.
Yes.
Manning Martin.
Yes.
Rozignol.
Yes.
Turco.
Yes.
Melville.
Yes.
Gravell.
Yes.
Sharrest.
Yes.
Motion carries 10 to nothing, one absent.
Motion orders and resolutions, Counselor O'Neal.
No, it was a Finance Committee.
Oh, I'm trying to move it along. I'm sorry, Gravell.
I got you.
Not that it's not so riveting.
Sorry.
No, don't be sorry. Counselor Gravell.
This evening was a meeting of Finance Committee representing the committee where myself, Counselor Gould, Counselor Manning Martin, Counselor McGinn, and Counselor Turco. All other councils were present. There were two items before us. One was a loan order, relocation and upgrade of Route 1 water mains. This is a project that has a value of $2,756,000. The mayor informed us that MWRA is providing a 10-year interest-free loan to conduct this project, which will, when it's done, hopefully add a good amount of water pressure to residents who desperately need it. A motion was made to allow the, to allow the mayor to enter into the loan agreement as advertised. So moved. And adopted. So moved.
Roll call vote.
Counselors O'Neal.
Yes.
McGinn.
Yes.
Gould.
Yes.
Sassla.
Yes.
Manning Martin.
Yes.
Rozignol.
Yes.
Yes.
Yes. Gravell.
Yes.
Sharrest.
Yes.
Motion carries 10 to nothing, one absent.
Second item on the agenda was a transfer of funds for the Crystal Lake Project. Basically, we're through Phase 1. We were advised by the mayor that the funds that are being requested are to complete Phase 2, which is the beautiful things that people will get to enjoy, including the boat docks, the gazebo, the benches, the trim around the edges, as well as the fountain. That's supposed to be in the middle, which will help us, by the way, keep the same thing from happening to it in the future. The motion was made to move the funds from $500,000 from account number 100000035901 in the amount of $500,000 and to move funds from the Bond Premium Reserve for Projects, account number 270000033015 in the amount of $250,000 to the Crystal Lake Project, which is account number 30094175873120184420 in the amount of $750,000. So moved.
You heard the motion, roll call.
Counselors O'Neal.
Excuse me, Counselor Rozignol.
Just on the motion and on the request, on the Bond Premium Reserve Project, I know that Mr. Gingrich put forward $250,000. I'm just wondering if there, how much is in that account and is there other reserve funds left? So through you, Mr. President, to Counselor Gravell.
I don't know the balance that's in that, but basically the Bond Premium Reserve for projects is bonded amounts that were not expended for projects that are associated with property plant equipment as well as, you know, and they have to be utilized in a certain timeframe and that's why I think they're trying to use this $250,000. I don't know that there's a, a big pool of this money available, but it clearly is. That's, that's what it's meant for. Thank you.
Roll call.
Counselors O'Neal.
Yes.
McGinn.
Yes.
Gould.
Yes.
Yes.
Manning Martin.
Yes.
Rozignol.
Yes.
Turco.
Yes.
Melville.
Yes.
Gravell.
Yes.
Sharrest.
Yes.
Motion carries 10 to nothing.
No further, no further reports.
Motion and resolutions, Counselor O'Neal.
Thank you, Mr. President. I don't have any motions tonight.
Counselor McGinn.
Thank you, Mr. President. On suspension of rules, move to receive item 8B. So moved.
Eight, eight B, a D.
B as in boy.
Heard the motion, all in favor, any opposed, it's a vote.
Thank you, Mr. President. On suspension of rules, move to receive item 8M and refer to legal affairs. So moved.
Heard the motion, all in favor, any opposed, it's a vote.
No further motions, Mr. President. Thank you.
Counselor Gould.
Thank you, Mr. President. Co-motion with Counselor Mazzulis to have a tree at 9 Jefferson Road looked at to determine whether it's dead and if it is, please remove. So moved.
Heard the motion, all in favor, any opposed, it's a vote.
No further motions.
Counselor Sassla.
Thank you. On suspension ru, rules, motion to receive item 8F.
Heard the motion, all in favor, any opposed, it's a vote.
On suspension rules, motion to receive item 8H and set up a public, now, actually, I'm going to do 8H and 8N are the same, same company, motion to receive and set up a public hearing.
Heard, you heard the motion, all in favor, any opposed, it's a vote.
On suspension rules, motion to receive item 8J, set up a special permit hearing.
Heard the motion, all in favor, any opposed, it's a vote.
Suspension rules, receive item 8K.
Heard the motion, all in favor, any opposed, it's a vote.
Suspension rules, receive item 8P, set up a special permit hearing.
Heard the motion, all in favor, any opposed, it's a vote.
And I'd also like to make a motion. We've received tonight the two special permit applications for the medicinal marijuana facilities. If you remember, part of that process is a host agreement that is to be negotiated with the city. I'd like to make a motion, co-motion with Counselor Turco, that the mayor's office provide that host agreement a minimum of one week before the scheduled special permit public hearings so that my fellow counselors have time to review that before the special permit public hearing for HR development and cytotherapy.
Heard the motion, all in favor. There was a late communication?
Yes, there was a late communication motion that was from Chief Griffin regarding, excuse me, I want to get the right one. That was for, which, that was for the, I'm sorry, HR development, motion to receive late communication from Police Chief Griffin.
Heard the motion, all in- Heard the motion, all in favor, any opposed, it's a vote. And on the, your motion, you heard the motion, all in favor, any opposed, it's a vote.
Thank you, Counselor.
Counselor Manning Martin.
Motion, Mr. Chairman.
Counselor Rozignol.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Under suspensions of the rules, first, I'd like to just publicly thank Gary Gullman. Those of you that know him, he's a PBD resident. He's a comedian. He's actually putting on a benefit tonight at the high school in support and to raise funds for the Student-Based Health Center. So I just wanted to publicly acknowledge him and thank him for donating his time and for a worthy cause. So I don't know if that needs to be a motion, but that's just more of a public approximation, proclamation. But I would like to make a motion that this council sends a letter to the town of Lynnfield, as well as the selectmen of Lynnfield, stating our opposition of a proposed development that they're going to have a town meeting on, on Monday. The proposed development is at Sagamore Golf Course, which directly abuts the residence of West PBD. And they have to change their zones in order to allow this development to occur. Much like what we did with medical marijuana when we were looking at changing our zoning ordinances, the residents of Lynnfield came before this council. They stated their opposition and us doing our due diligence, we listened to the residents that this would affect and we modified our zone in accordance to their request. And this I look at very similarly. There are one, two, three, four different articles that Lynnfield would have to change their zoning ordinance for this to go into. And one of them deals with, basically, and I'm going to summarize, is because they're on septic and not on sewer, they would have one giant station at the end of their road, which would directly abut Catherine Drive. So what I would like to do is send a motion and a letter with this City Council's opposition of that development because it directly impacts the residents of Ward 6. And this would be a co-motion with Counselor O'Neal and I. And I would like this expedited because the town meeting is on April 30th. So that, I would like that motion as an emergency preamble. So moved.
Heard the motion, all in favor?
We have to take a roll call.
Roll call. I've been informed I need a roll call on, on the preamble for-
Just to-
Yep. Counselor Sassla, I saw you first.
Thank you. So through to Counselor Rozignol. So, just so I understand, so the issue for the residents of who would abut it in Ward 6, I heard talk about a large, large septic system and were there any other reasons? And the reason I ask, I'm not, I'm just trying to say, I mean, is, do we feel that that it would not, you know, are there any other reasons besides that? I'm just curious.
Counselor Rozignol.
Through the chair. There's a few reasons. A, you're looking at over, so by permit, they could do 135. They're looking at doing 154 units. It's a pretty substantial development. So you're looking at water runoff, you're looking at water usage, you're looking at conservation, you're looking at, there's, there's more problems with this than there are positives, in my opinion. But that's just my opinion. But as, as far as the articles that they're voting on, they're, they're pretty numerous and pretty expansive that I just don't think would benefit our city.
I appreciate you answering my question and I guess what it comes down to is maybe if they gave us a little communication, maybe a little presentation explanation because I, I totally understand what you're saying when you're talking- I totally understand what you're saying when you talk about, you know, water and sewage. And I believe we even supply parts of Lynnfield with electricity. So all those things could come into play. It could be benefit, it could be detrimental to our community. So I'll support that. Thank you for the time.
Manny Martin.
Thank you. Council Sasla pretty much asked the questions that I was going to ask, but that kind of parlayed in on the question I had earlier about the MWRA and water usage to Lynnfield that we had talked about earlier. So that's, and I want to commend Councilor Rozignal for catching that. It's obviously in another publication. So that was good of you to bring that forward. Thank you.
Council Gravel, did you have your hand up before? Council Melville, not from that side? I've just seen waves. On the preamble, roll call.
Councilors O'Neill.
Yes.
McGinn.
Yes.
Gould.
Yes.
Sasla.
Yes.
Manny Martin.
Yes.
Rozignal.
Yes.
Turco.
Yes.
Melville.
Yes.
Gravel.
Yes.
Charis.
Yes.
The preamble carries 10 to nothing.
And vote on the motion. We could do a...
I'd like to request a roll call, Mr. President.
Roll call. Before the roll call, Council Gould, you had your hand up.
Councilor Rozignal stated the date, and it's actually that the town meeting is Monday night, the 30th. So I don't know if you're going to, I don't know how quick you can put something together and get it to the town clerk, Tim. Can you do that tomorrow?
Can you make a phone call?
Absolutely. Okay. Okay, thank you.
Roll call.
Councilors O'Neill.
Yes.
McGinn.
Yes.
Gould.
Yes.
Yes.
Manny Martin.
Yes.
Rozignal.
Yes.
Turco.
Yes.
Melville.
Yes.
Gravel.
Yes.
Charis.
Yes.
Motion carries 10 to nothing.
Is that it, Council Rozignal? Council Turco.
Thank you, Mr. President. Under suspension of the rules, I'd like to receive item 8E and just state that Joey and Elena LaFroda are very good friends of mine. And Joey passed away in February, and Elaine couldn't have been happier with the treatment and the care that was given to her by Detective Murphy and other Peabody police officers. So I just wanted to say thank you personally and move to receive.
Heard the motion. All in favor. Any opposed? It's a vote. Council Turco.
Mr. President, under one motion, a motion to have DPW repair the sidewalks at 4 Britton Road, 11 Granite Road, 32 Elmwood Circle, and 30 Aberdeen Avenue.
Heard the motion. All in favor. Any opposed? It's a vote.
Mr. President, this motion's in regards to the security camera at the front door of the Brown School, which was brought to my attention shortly after the shootings in Florida, that the camera at the door does not work. So when somebody buzzes, they're, they need to open the door without actually viewing who's there. And I understand it's a small piece of security, but yet a needed piece of security. I brought this to the attention of the superintendent in February, and to this day, it still has not been done. So at this point, I'd like to file a motion to the superintendent of schools to have the front door security camera at the Brown School repaired and made operable. And I'd also like to file that under an emergency preamble.
Heard the motion for the preamble. Roll call. Council...
Councilors O'Neill.
Yes.
McGinn.
Yes.
Gould. Sasla. Manny Martin.
Yes.
Rozignal.
Yes.
Turco.
Yes.
Melville.
Yes.
Gravel.
Yes.
Charis.
Yes.
Motion on the preamble carries 10 to nothing.
Heard the motion on, hearing the motion, I'm all messed up. All in favor. Any opposed? It's a vote.
Mr. President.
Council Turco.
Mr. President.
You always give me the hard ones.
This is one that I just, tonight, after reviewing the dog mother's application, I realized that the business is in a residential zone, and she's charged residential, you know, property taxes. And I just wonder why we don't separate businesses that operate in conjunction as a mixed use, and we don't get that revenue on the commercial side? Because a large portion of that property, amongst others, that we approve on a weekly basis, should be charged commercially. They're living on the property. That should be the residential. I think we should open it for discussion. I did speak briefly with Susan Antonellis, and she said in some cases, this is done where it is separated out, but not in all. And I just wonder why that is and why we don't separate it. And as a revenue source to the city of Peabody, I know that most of these businesses probably write off that portion of their homes. And, you know, to be fair, we should also notate that those are businesses. So I would like to refer that to the finance committee, that issue.
Heard the motion. All in favor. Any opposed? It's a vote.
And Tim, if you could invite Susan Antonellis to that meeting, I would appreciate it. Another issue that should be coming to us shortly, and we've had discussions on it in the previous year, were the small cell towers, also known as the DAS system, that are taking effect in lieu of large cells. And when you look at our zoning, it's very brief. It's actually one paragraph under Section 7.9.2A for the zoning for small cell minor wireless communication facilities. So I would like to have the building commissioner and community development, along with the city attorney, Mike Schmazinski, take a look at this zoning ordinance and possibly rewrite it to better protect us in the event that these small wireless communication facilities do arrive in Peabody, which they will, and maybe even develop a fee schedule for that. So if we could refer that to those parties and have them, I guess we could send that to Community Development, Industrial and Community Development.
Motion. All in favor. Any opposed? It's a vote.
And lastly, the joint subcommittee of the school committee and city council, which we already have a proposed meeting for. Tim, if you could add to that agenda, and this is a co-motion with Council Sasla, to discuss the subject of a change in school start times.
Heard the motion. All in favor. Any opposed? It's a vote.
That's all, Mr. President.
Council Melville.
Thank you very much, Mr. President. I don't have any motions for tonight, but I just wanted to commend the city. They had Student Government Day a couple of weeks back. I know somebody that participated when I was in high school, it meant a lot to me. And I know how much times many of the, whether the elected officials, members of the city, I know Mary Bellavance had quite to do with it. Tim took us on a nice tour, kind of ran that, which he did a great job. I just wanted to commend all of them. It was a really well put together event, and it was a good day. So that's all. Thank you very much, Mr. President.
Council Gravel.
Yes, Mr. President. Under suspension of the rules, receive the letter, late communication from his honor, the mayor, for the use of insurance proceeds for Coolidge Fire, and send it to the finance subcommittee.
Heard the motion. All in favor. It's opposed. It's a vote.
And I would just like to hopefully remind councilors that I hope they've received their invitations to the George Peabody Legacy Award. And that'll be conducted in this hall on May 17th. We have a great slate of nominees for the award, and I think it would be great to see all of you there. Thank you.
Thank you. Is that all, Council Gravel? I only have one motion. It's ask the street department to look at the hanging tree, for a better word, on Perkins at the corner of the Bob Driscoll Icegating Rank and the, where the basketball courts are. It's leaning, it's getting very close to the lines, and school's going to be out soon. And I hate to see people climbing up that tree and grabbing a hold of those lines. So move. You heard the motions. All in favor. Any opposed? It's a vote. That's all I have.
Mr. President. Move to receive item 8A. So moved.
So move. Heard the motion. All in favor. Any opposed? It's a vote.
Thank you, Mr. President. Move to receive item 8C. So moved.
All in favor. Any opposed? It's a vote.
Move to receive item 8D. So moved.
All in favor. Any opposed? It's a vote.
Move to receive item 8L. So moved.
All in favor. Any opposed? It's a vote.
Mr. President, move to approve taxi limousine driver's license, Sarah Parr, license 59. All papers being in order. So moved.
All in favor. Any opposed? It's a vote.
Mr. President, move to approve junk dealer's license, renewal for 2018, Shalin Appliance Center, Inc., 15 Springsteen, and Cage Jules, number 1244210, Andover Street. So moved.
You're all in favor. Any opposed? It's a vote. Take us home, Counselor.
Thank you, Mr. President. Move to receive and approve item 9C, utility contractors' license, J.J. O'Brien and Son, Inc., 5 Fern Street, Waltham. So moved.
You're all in favor. Any opposed? It's a vote.
Everybody, we need a roll call on this last one, I think. Move to adopt the bond order as advertised, item 10A. So moved.
Already did it.
We did it. In finance committee, I went the report out. Thank you, Council Gravel. Move to adjourn.